Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
We're certainly glad to be here. It's a beautiful day in spite of the weather. It does has its place and time, and we're going to take that as it is. And we're certainly grateful to be here, and we truly thank our Lord and Savior for allowing us to have another opportunity to do something really, really special for this community. So with that being said, I am calling the meeting to order, and at this time it give me pleasure to ask Pastor Brady Beard from Seale United Methodist Church to come and lead us with the invocation, and if we can stand, and after that, Councilman Bailey will lead us with the pledge.
Thank you all for having me. Do you pray with me? Gracious and loving God, we give you thanks and acknowledge today that all that we have and all that we are is a gift from you. We give you thanks for this little spot of ground that we call Phoenix City, and for the families and the people and the businesses that live here. All that we ask now that you would guide us in our conversations and guide us in our decisions, that we would do things that create value for our citizens and further enhance the wonderful opportunities that are afforded by living here. Be with us now, Lord. Give us your peace and your countenance and guide us to brighter days. I pray this all on behalf of the Christians of our community and in the name of our Lord, Jesus Christ.
Amen. Place the flag, please. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor. You're welcome to state. Again, if you leave, it will not be held against you. Thank you, Councilman Bailey. Proceeding on, at this time, we have a presentation for proclamation, and I would like to call upon our clerk for the reading of a proclamation recognizing human trafficking awareness month. Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Whereas Alabama's Human Trafficking Awareness Month was established in January 2011 in observance of National Human Trafficking Awareness Day to proclaim the equality and freedom of all people, to advocate for legislation, to educate leaders, and to encourage public awareness to the various forms of human trafficking. And whereas human trafficking occurs when an adult or child is recruited, harbored, obtained, or exported through force, fraud, or coercion for the purposes of sexual exploitation, forced labor, involuntary servitude, debt, bondage, and other methods of slavery. And whereas anyone can become a victim of trafficking, while women and girls are the primary victim, victim survivors come from every background, race, gender, sexual orientation, and economic status. Traffickers target individuals who, for any reason, are vulnerable. And whereas victims and survivors can be trafficked by anyone, traffickers can be family members, relatives, friends, and/or romantic partners, as well as acquaintances or strangers. And whereas even though awareness of this crime is growing, human trafficking continues to go unreported due to its isolating nature, the misunderstanding of its definition, and the lack of awareness about its indicators. And whereas increased community education on how to identify victims of human trafficking, along with increased knowledge of local resources and services for those affected by these criminal actions, can help restore freedom and dignity to identified survivors, as well as help diminish the number of future victims. And whereas fighting human trafficking is a shared responsibility, the efforts by our local communities to promote the yearly observance of Human Trafficking Awareness Month in January enacts one of the examples of the continuous commitment in the United States and the state of Alabama to increase awareness of and to actively eradicate human trafficking. Now therefore, I, Eddie N. Lowe, Mayor of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of January 2023 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Phoenix City.
Come on up, come on down. Good morning. Thank you for being here. But more importantly, we just want to thank you, this council and myself, this community just want to thank you for keeping a light on this. This is such an injustice, and we know it happened, but we surely like to thank you and whomever is involved, and we are all involved indirectly for such an act of this. But we really want to thank you for keeping a light on it, and we all need to keep a light on it and keeping us accountable for it because it is such a horrible thing that takes place. Just want to take people like yourself and like all of us to be here to combat this mitigating. So with that, on behalf of this council and myself, we'd like to present you with this proclamation. And the mic is yours, too. Oh, you want to take a picture?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much, and the mic is yours.
Hello, everyone. Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Jamie Willett. I'm with Ended Alabama, which is Alabama's Human Trafficking Task Force. We're a coalition of law enforcement, legislators, labor trafficking representatives, nonprofits, faith-based recovery and restoration groups. I was trying to think about what I would say today when I came here, and I thought the most important thing that I could tell you were two things. And the first thing is that trafficking doesn't look like you probably think it does. It doesn't look like the movie Taken. It doesn't look like the white van grabbing kids off of the street. It tends to be a lot more quiet. There's a lot more psychological manipulation involved, oftentimes online. It also doesn't look like those social media posts that you probably see on Facebook. You should always be aware of your situation and your environment, but it's not typically a marked car or somebody following you in Walmart. Traffickers are in for the long game. They're looking to exploit vulnerability. They can be looking for people who need money, they need a place to stay, they're looking for drugs, they, or even they're just looking for relationship and love and attention. Oftentimes, victims think they're in a relationship with their trafficker. The other thing that I would tell you is that it is happening here. It's not usually about an international border. This is Americans selling Americans. It's families and caregivers and children. There were several high-profile cases just in 2022 here in Alabama. One of them was out in Montgomery where a man had been trafficking five women. That was the largest prosecuted case in Alabama history. He was sentenced to 60 years in prison and $950,000 in restitution. And he was not only convicted because of the tireless efforts of law enforcement, but also because of the bravery of the five women that he had exploited. They came forward and they testified against him so that nobody else would have to go through that with him. Also, the World Games, there was a very large operation surrounding that, which resulted in a lot of different arrests for trafficking because even though trafficking is already here, large events like that tend to bring a lot more to the city because the demand is higher. So we're so thankful for the tireless efforts of law enforcement for that operation and also for the many organizations that came together to get the training that was needed for the volunteers so that they could recognize it when they saw it. So thank you very much for helping us to shine a light on this, and we appreciate your partnership.
Thank you so much, and you continue to keep the light on it. Thank you, Mrs. Willett. We thank you so much, and as we all see, it is a problem, so we all do have some type of responsibility with it. Proceeding on, council at this time, under the city clerk, approval of the regularly scheduled meeting minutes. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for the approval of the January 3 work session. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion from Councilman Day. May I have a second? Second, Councilman Gordy. Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceeding on, council, at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion from the council for the approval of the January 4 council meeting. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion by Councilwoman Carter. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Bailey. Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
abstaining.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceeding on, council, under the city council, at this time, I'd like to ask the council if there any unfinished business for discussion? Since there's not any, we will proceed with the resolutions and under administrations. We have a resolution in reference to renewing the tax structure of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, for the tax year beginning October the 1st, 2023. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, has reviewed the tax structure of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, and deems it advisable and/or necessary to adopt a resolution in connection herewith. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that a tax fee in the same as hereby levied on the property situated in Phoenix City, Alabama, for the next succeeding tax year at the rate not in excess of the constitutional limits which may be levied on such property, as the same is assessed for taxation on the books of assessment for the state and county tax year ending the 30th day of September, next succeeding the levy. The taxes to be levied for the succeeding tax year commencing on the 1st of October 2023 shall be seven meals for debt payments, five meals for general operating expenses, three meals for school tax, and an additional four meals for school tax. Be it further resolved that the homestead exemption as approved in ordinance number 96-14, adopted on the 18th day of July 1996, does hereby apply to the taxes as levied above. Passed, proven, and adopted this 18th day of January 2023.
Okay, thank you so much, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Council, we've all heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion from Councilman Gordy. Is that the second, Councilman Day?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have that, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any comments or discussion? Okay, at this time, I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceeding on, council, next is we have a resolution in reference to filing an application with ALDOT for the Transportation Alternative Program known as TAP fiscal year 2023 to correct ADA deficiencies, hardscape improvements, and landscape improvements along a portion of 14th Street between Ninth Avenue and 12th Avenue. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City is concerned for and committed to providing safe and accessible transportation systems for its citizens. And whereas evidenced by that commitment, the city wishes to make application to the Alabama Department of Transportation through the Columbus Phoenix City Metropolitan Planning Organization, C-PCMPO, for grant assistance for a total cost of $1,101,315.25 from the Transportation Alternatives Program, TAP, funds dedicated to the C-PCMPO for the purposes of correcting some ADA deficiencies, hardscape improvements, and landscape improvements located along 14th Street between Ninth Avenue and 12th Avenue in the city's downtown area. And whereas $846,761.45 will be funded by ALDOT, and the remaining $254,553.80 will be required from the City of Phoenix City. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, hereby authorizes the filing of said application, including all understandings and assurances contained therein, and directs and authorizes its mayor and city manager to act in conjunction with the application and to provide such additional information to the C-PCMPO and ALDOT as may be required. Passed, proven, and adopted this 18th day of January 2023.
Thank you so much. Council, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I would like to ask for a motion. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilwoman Carter. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Day. Comments or discussion, council?
Yeah, just a brief question. So after the application has been submitted on a usual basis, what seems to be the turnaround time for approval or not approved?
It's not a set time on that. We just have to wait until they notify, especially after they go through the whole process. Because you have other people, other cities that's applying also, you know, other little small cities that's ramping up funds, but we've been able to get, been fortunate so far, been able to get a jump on my fees, so it's a help to get a million dollar project done for a quarter of a million dollars, that's a nice return. So it's not a set time to get a jump on this.
So Mr. Hunter, they'd just like to match the amount of money we're spending, like a match on that fund?
Basically, a 20% match. You know, we gave 20% of, you know, of that.
So other city, other sides put in, do the same thing we're doing, they don't have the money we go forward?
It depends, you know, depending on what they have or not. Our job is just to make sure we have.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you know, and try to beat them to the punch. That's what we've been able to do in a lot of cases.
Yeah, I call it sheever ready. Sheever ready.
Basically, that's how they usually do in stimulus program, but a lot of the time making sure that people can have fun getting through everything. And this is good project. You know, this will be three consecutive times if we get this particular thing. We have one that's already that we're waiting on, on the same corridor. And so we get this right here, that'll be good, and I think we have a pretty good chance of getting it.
Okay, good. We're hopeful.
Thank you, Ms. Carter and Mr. Day. Thank you, Mr. Wallace. No other comments or questions. At this time, I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
And also, council proceeding on, under administration, is a resolution in reference to the revision of the Public Works Manual, section 7.06.C.4, sanitary sewer specification. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas Resolution Number 2022-188 adopted the Public Works Manual, and whereas said Public Works Manual is a living document and is subject to revisions as needed. And whereas Section 7.06.C.4, page 7-84 of the sanitary sewer specifications in the Public Works Manual states, "All single-family residences, multifamily residences, up to four dwelling units on the same property and businesses shall have individual connections for each dwelling unit and business unit to public sewer main." And whereas to make Section 7.06.C.4 more clear, it needs to be revised to state, "If a property has only one building excepted for occupancy and said building has less than five dwelling units and/or business units, each of said dwelling units and/or business units shall have individual connections to a public sewer main. If a property has more than one building excepted for occupancy, the dwelling units and/or business units may use the same sanitary service to connect to a public sewer main. If a property has at least one building with five or more dwelling units and/or business units, the dwelling units and/or business units may use the same sanitary service to connect to a public sewer main." Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize the aforementioned revision to Section 7.06.C.4 of the sanitary sewer specifications in the Public Works Manual. Passed, proven, and adopted this 18th day of January 2023.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Council, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Gordy. May I have a second?
Second, Mayor.
Second from Councilwoman Carter. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, let me see if I'm understanding this. For apartment, you know, like, section apartment, each section will have to have their own individual sewer line?
We're trying to make something clear, but y'all already have a mandate. Y'all want to explain that, what we're going to, like utilities, like utility, explain what we're going to say, out some of the literature that's in our mandate. I mean, that's what we're doing, make sure people have correct understanding.
Mayor, council, the revision change would not require apartments buildings to have separate services that are on the same piece of property.
Oh, okay.
They can use the same connection to the same sewer.
Okay, no matter how many, let's say apartment's got four or five unit, they can use the same sewage, is that right?
Yeah, if you come up, one building has four units.
No, 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 I'm talking about if you got apartment, got three or four unit there, and they're on the same property, and they're coming into one sewage line, or they have to have individual sewage line.
If it's only got three, if it's got four units or less, meaning dwellings, then it would have individual services.
Okay.
If they have water, then they can connect to the same service.
Okay.
The difference is a master, having a master compared to individual, as far as the measure.
Okay.
And this doesn't affect any of the ones that are already out there now, this is just from new forward?
That's true.
That's, well, I guess that's on the utilities as well, you know, like, I know some folk painting, a big water bein' when you stay in an apartment, you know? That's what be charging to your utility, sewage rent and all that.
The water?
Yeah.
That would just be included in?
Yeah, this is going forward. This is something going forward now, for clarification.
Okay, okay. Let's just don't affect the old, don't affect the old system, okay?
It depends on how that developer, those apartment owners have that setup and structure. If they have it where they do, and people pay them, pay that within their rents, that's one thing's already set in a lot of places.
Yes, already set.
Sometimes you've already had it set where you have individual units per apartment.
Yeah, okay.
This is make sure we could have things for our Oliver people.
All right, thank you, Jen.
Thank you, Jen. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Day. At this time, council, I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee. Proceeding on, council, under administration, we have a public notice setting and administrative hearing for the revocation of business license for Chancy's Tree Services. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Public notice. Notice is hereby given that the members of the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, will conduct an administrative hearing during the regularly scheduled council meeting at 9:00 a.m. on Wednesday, February 22, 2023, at the Martin Island Lava Park Community Center located at 3743 Moonlight Drive, Phoenix City, Alabama. The administrative hearing will be held in regards to the revocation of the 2023 Phoenix City Business License for Chancy's Tree Service located at 1812 21st Court, Phoenix City, Alabama, owned by David Thomas Chancy. At said meeting, all persons desiring to be heard on the above matter may appear before council at aforementioned time and place. Passed, proven, and adopted this 18th day of January 2023.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee. Council, we've heard the reading of the public notice. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve this public notice.
Motion to approve.
All right, motion for Councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordy. Comments or discussion? Okay, if not, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, council, proceeding on, is a public notice setting and administration hearing for the revocation of business license for the Honeycomb. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Public notice. Notice is hereby given that the members of the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, will conduct administrative hearing during the regularly scheduled council meeting at 9:00 a.m. on Wednesday, February 22, 2023, at the Martin Island Lava Park Community Center located at 3743 Moonlight Drive, Phoenix City, Alabama. The administrative hearing will be held in regards to the revocation of the 2023 Phoenix City Business License for the Honeycomb located at 202 Seale Road, Suite B and C, Phoenix City, Alabama, owned by Dexter Billingsley. At said meeting, all persons desiring to be heard on the above matter may appear before council at aforementioned time and place. Passed, proven, and adopted this 18th day of January 2023.
Thank you again, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Council, we've heard the reading of the public notice. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for the approval of this notice. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Bailey. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Carter. Comments or discussion? Okay, if not, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
And council, also under administration, is a public notice setting and administrative hearing for the revocation of business license for Automotive Service Center. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Public notice. Notice is hereby given that the members of the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, will conduct administrative hearing during the regularly scheduled council meeting at 9:00 a.m. on Wednesday, February 22, 2023, at the Martin Island Lava Park Community Center located at 3743 Moonlight Drive, Phoenix City, Alabama. The administrative hearing will be held in regards to the revocation of the 2023 Phoenix City Business License for Automotive Service Center located at 523 Sixth Place, Phoenix City, Alabama, owned by Eddie Robinson and Kelvin Robinson. At said meeting, all persons desiring to be heard on the above matter may appear before council at the aforementioned time and place. Passed, proven, and adopted this 18th day of January 2023.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Council, we've heard the reading of the public notice. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for the approval of this public notice.
Motion to approve.
All right, motion from Councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordy. Comments or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Abstaining.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceeding on, council, under Engineering and Public Works Department, is a resolution in reference to declaring various items as surplus to be sold as scrap or disposed of at the city landfill. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the Engineering Division of the Engineering and Public Works Department of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, has items of personal property which are no longer needed for public or municipal purposes. And whereas Section 114356 of the Code of Alabama 1975, as amended, authorizes the municipal government body to dispose of unneeded personal property. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the following described property is listed below as hereby declared surplus to be sold as scrap or disposed of at the city landfill. One black office chair, one brown office chair, one Samsung HD camera. Passed, proven, and adopted this 18th day of January 2023.
Okay. Council, all of us has heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Gordy. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Bailey. Any comments or discussion?
Yeah, looking at your office chair, they got the best way out of this, got all the way out of this one, looking at those. They've been there for a long time.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, at this time, I'd like to call on the clerk, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, and also council on the engineering public works department, is a resolution in reference to authorizing the takeover of monthly payments to Alabama Power Company to, to replace the current bracket at the corner of Twelfth Avenue and Eleventh Avenue with a longer arm, and to install two fifty-three watt LED streetlights, fifty-two hundred to seventy-two hundred lumens type two gray at the corner of Twelfth Avenue and Eleventh Avenue, and on the pole in the island at Twelfth Avenue and Thirteenth Avenue, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the city will authorize Alabama Power to install the following streetlights and pay the monthly electric service to Alabama Power Company for the streetlights as follows. One, replace the current bracket at the corner of Twelfth Avenue and Eleventh Avenue with a longer arm. Two, install two fifty-three watt LED streetlights, excuse me, fifty-two hundred to seventy-two hundred lumens type two gray at the corner of Twelfth Avenue and Eleventh Avenue, and on the pole in the island at Twelfth Avenue and Thirteenth Avenue. Passed, approved and adopted this eighteenth day of January, twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, we've heard the resolution, at this time, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilwoman Carter, and that's the second Councilman Gordon. All right, Mrs. Lee, you have the motion and the second, any comments or discussion, counsel? All right, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
Thank you.
And next council on the fire department, is a resolution in reference to entering to a grant agreement with the Alabama Department of Commerce for tuition reimbursement with Chattahoochee Valley Community College for emergency medical technician training in an amount not to exceed six thousand dollars, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, and Phoenix City Fire Rescue has applied for and been awarded a grant through the Alabama Department of Commerce for funding, and whereas the city of Phoenix City and Phoenix City Fire Rescue wishes to enter into an agreement with the Alabama Department of Commerce in order to obtain funds for tuition reimbursement with Chattahoochee Valley Community College for emergency medical technician training. The total funds awarded are up to six thousand dollars. The city of Phoenix City will be required to pay the initial funds for the tuition with one hundred percent of the funds being reimbursed by the Alabama Department of Commerce. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize and direct the mayor and city managers, authorizing officials to sign the necessary documents for the agreement with the Alabama Department of Commerce. Passed, approved and adopted this eighteenth day of January, twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, thank you so much again, counsel, we've heard the, uh, resolution of the reading from my clerk, at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Bailey, may I have a second?
Second.
Second Councilman Gordon, comments or discussion?
Yeah, if I could just, you said yesterday this pertains to two individuals that'll be going?
Yes, sir.
How long do they go, how long does this take? Not to get the money back, but the course they take, is it a?
This is a semester in college, so they start in the morning, they'll finish up, they'll take their final exams, uh, the week of, first weekend night.
Okay. And how, roughly, how many people we have we sent through this over the years? Probably a dozen or more?
Uh, no, sorry.
Not that many?
Years ago, when Chief Hopper and I came to the fire department, we had to get our , uh, emergency medical training at CBCC. Um, since we have the East Alabama Training Consortium, um, we provide that training while they recruit school, and it's a six, six to eight week course, this is a semester in school. Um, we just had, um, a change in the schedule where no one was gonna teach the EMT course
Okay.
through recruit school, that's why I saw, and I, I didn't know that they weren't gonna do that, and so at the last minute, I needed to find funds to send them to get their training because no one else is gonna teach the class for free.
So this was kinda, I mean, I'm not gonna say unusual, but you, it was kinda just off guard.
It's different than our normal process, yes, sir.
But, and I'm, I'm assuming since the normal process didn't take place, that that's why some of this is available to be done this way.
That's correct, and it just so happened that the state of Alabama had these funds for, um, medical training, and we have, we qualified for that type of reimbursement.
Well, it's good that you didn't give up on trying to find them some training.
Yes, sir.
Whether we had to pay for it as a city, or whether the state pays for it, or what, they needed the training, the training to save lives.
Well, that money wasn't planned in our budget, so I mean, any reimbursement's gonna be.
Yeah, oh yeah, be a help, but.
Yes, sir.
Hundred percent. We would've still needed to have done what we'd have had to do.
Yes, sir.
Even if we hadn't been able to find that money, but thank goodness, using your good common sense to look a little further than normal.
Yes, sir.
It worked out wonderful, thank you so much for what you did.
Uh, Chief, that's a, that's a good thing you did, but let me ask you a question, hypothetically, those two individuals that you got going through those classes down there, what if one fail, how would that have failed?
There's no option.
I mean, I'm just curious.
There's no option. They're not going through it.
Yes. I'm just curious, that's all.
The long-term answer, the long-term answer is they'll be getting this from the employee.
Right, okay.
They've got to hire that person.
There's, there's no option.
And, and between though.
Yes, sir.
In between though, they have options.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Chief.
But it just so happened we had this longer term.
As well?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, proceeding on council on the parks and recreation department, we have a resolution in reference to authorizing and accepting a proposal from Phoenix Paving and Maintenance LLC to repair the Lakewood Golf Course cart path in an amount not to exceed forty-nine thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Phoenix City desires to repair the golf cart paths at the Lakewood Golf Course, and whereas the Lakewood Golf Course cart paths currently has approximately six areas that are showing signs of deteriorated pavement, and whereas the city Lakewood Golf Course solicited three contractors and received only one proposal from Phoenix Paving and Maintenance LLC, meeting Lakewood Golf Course's desired specifications in an amount not to exceed forty-nine thousand three hundred forty-five dollars. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize and accept the proposal from Phoenix Paving and Maintenance LLC to repair the Lakewood Golf Course cart path in an amount not to exceed forty-nine thousand three hundred forty-five dollars. Passed, approved and adopted this eighteenth day of January, twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you, the tongue twister there.
It could be.
Thank you, you did good.
Yes.
Counsel, we've heard the reading of the resolution from my clerk, at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Motion, Councilman Day, may I have a second?
Second.
Second Councilwoman, uh, Carter. I'm, I'm still getting used to it, Councilwoman Carter. Okay. We have the motion and the second, comments or discussion?
Yes, uh, um, it's gonna be, you said a portion of the golf course, is that right?
Yes, sir.
I was just looking at the back page back here, the, on, uh, fourteen, that looked pretty good back there, so is all of it done at the same time, or?
Yes, sir, that, that was, that was the part that we did at the same time.
Okay. But I was asking with the back part done originally when they did it, cause it looked pretty good on the, on page fourteen.
They're just, they're just a few spots, some of them have root, three roots and a lot of areas.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
I've been in the whole, the whole, uh, panel.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Day. Thank you, Todd. Any other comments or discussion? If not, I'd like to call for the vote, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, next council on the police department, we have a resolution in reference to declaring personal property as surplus and disposing of for the nominal sum of one dollars and other valuable consideration to Terrence Walker in recognition of his twenty-five years of public service, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, has items of personal property which are no longer needed for public or municipal purposes, and whereas section eleven forty-three fifty-six of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five authorizes the municipal governing body to dispose of unneeded personal property. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the following described property is hereby declared surplus to be disposed of for the consideration of the nominal sum of one dollar and other valuable considerations to Terrence Walker in recognition of his twenty-five years of public service and dedication to the Phoenix City Police Department and the citizens of the city of Phoenix City. One H and K VP nine, nine millimeter caliber semi-automatic handgun, manufacturer serial number two-two-four dash one-nine-one-two-nine-eight. One badge Blackington model B seven-three-six R. Passed, approved and adopted this eighteenth day of January, twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you again, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, we've heard the resolution, at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion to approve.
All right, motion from Councilman Gordon, and that's the second Councilman Day?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mrs. Lee, we have the motion and the second.
Yes, sir.
At this time, uh, are there any comments or discussion first? Okay, if not, at this time, I'd like to call for the vote, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
Thank you.
And council proceeding on the utilities department, we have a resolution in reference to authorizing payment, authorizing paying the emergency repairs of the sewer main on Crawford Road to War Grading Contractor Incorporated in an amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars and ninety-two cents, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas it was determined that emergency work was immediately required on a portion of sanitary sewer main on Crawford Road at the intersection with Seventeenth Avenue, and whereas it was necessary that this work be performed as expeditiously as possible to ensure public safety and stop a sanitary sewer overflow and any further damage, and whereas War Grading Contractor Incorporated has submitted an invoice for this required emergency work in the amount of two-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars and ninety-two cent. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby declare the Crawford Road sanitary sewer main repairs an emergency, and authorizes and directs the mayor and city manager to pay War Grading Contractor Incorporated for the repair of said sanit, sanitary sewer main in an amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars and ninety-two cent. Passed, approved and adopted this eighteenth day of January, twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, counsel, we've heard the resolution, at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilwoman Carter, and that's the second Councilman Gordon. All right, we have the motion and second. Counsel, any comments or discussion?
Just a couple, number one, uh, would like to say what an exceptional job they did, had a lot of people that called me up, and I thought they were gonna complain about traffic, the time it's taken to fix it, the amount that they had, the work they had to do in the timeframe, but believe it or not, all of them positive on how good, uh, the contractor down there, the work he was doing, what part the city was involved with, the traffic flow overall, everything, uh, uh, all that was very positive, and that was highly unusual when you have something with a road stoppage in the middle of town, but that was how important it was to the people of our city that it, for once they acknowledged that we, every time we do a job, we try to take in consideration how they're gonna be affected, and that was one time that I appreciated them letting us know that they appreciated us doing that. But the second thing I'd like to think, uh, when we have an emergency come up like that, we have some idea of what it's gonna cost, I know we don't know how long it's gonna take to fix something, but do we anticipate like, you know, twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars for this type of repair to sixty thousand dollars for this type? Or we just blindsided, and I'm not saying this bill was overcharged, but anyway, that's not the reason I'm making this, or we just blindsided at the end with the bill, you know, where you just handed it, you know, being handed it? How, how does that kinda come out?
We always keep funds available for emergencies, that's one important thing that we have to do, but when you have something catastrophic like this, you look and you never know until you get the itemized list or who you call, and, and then that is thoroughly checked by our engineer, John Spragons is our, um, engineer in utilities, so we check and make sure that, you know, we're looking towards now, you know, we've been thrown into a whole different dilemma.
Right.
Over the past two, three years of rising costs of everything.
Oh, yeah, and that's why I'm asking that, do we?
We have a project that was seven hundred, um, forty thousand, that's now over thirty dollars, and, and certain projects.
Well, that's why I was asking that, though, we, you know, cause we could kinda get caught with the cost going up on something and we didn't think about it, or didn't realize the cost had increased overnight, and it's, and it's not the cost by them, it's what they'd be in charge of too.
You're being known something that's very important, and that's what I'm trying to convey to you all the lot of the time, our reserve funds, that's what those, it's very important to have those reserve funds put aside because you can't determine what devastation is gonna be caused by old, older infrastructure that's in place, e, even though we do routine maintenance, we have a lot of older spots and systems that's a hundred years old throughout the city, so this is one that when you get it, you pray for the best because in that particular area, we have a lot of concrete under the street, it's not just dirty molder, and that was from years ago, you know, decades ago, so this was a lot as far as getting to the problem, uh, the problem that was very deep in the ground, um, they had a lot of work to do, so, no, we did not know until we started getting the cost, and yet there was no way to, to determine that at that particular time, what, what was all need to be replaced and it, it helped, our things, make sure we had the residue to do it.
Well, something you run into too, in every town, but I know in Phoenix City, on Thirteenth Street, Fourteenth Street Crawford Road down there, is those streets were widened years ago, and just like up on Whitewater, we ran into dirt up there, probably where a service station had sat halfway across the original road there.
That's right.
They got widened at some point in time and, you know, taken over, and the road put there back in the forties, that you didn't have to do all that excavation, and now, in the two thousands you do, and all of a sudden you find an old station or whatever, uh, in that area, and like you said, that concrete down there, that road had been widened and buildings pushed back, pushed back, pushed back, from a dirt road, I'm sure at one time, all the way to what we have now.
And that's, that's, that's.
And that makes a difference when you start working on something.
Just like the front roads where, well, it was in Columbus on this side, where it was a meal area, meal town, and a lot of times where people demolished those buildings.
They buried it.
They buried it.
They buried them out there.
So anytime you start digging down, you know, or where you see a lot of sinkholes is where that debris that's under there.
It's a danger.
At that point in time, it creates those cavities that's, that's there throughout the city, so we have to look for that a lot, but it's, it's, it, it exists.
Yeah.
So as we progress and rebuild our areas, we're gonna run into a lot of that, you know, right, right, right over here in the back of us at the stadium, you know, when we had a sinkhole there, you know, you looked under the sinkhole, there was seven stairs there from a house, they used to be there years and years ago before that was put there. So it's, it's a lot of things that we run into out there that changes a lot, whole scope of the project that we're doing. Pray for the best.
Yeah, that's all you can do.
Yeah.
That's all I had.
I'll tell you what, my hat's off to those, uh, folks that doing that work out there, cause I passed through that number of time with the bad weather and stuff out there, they worked through some, uh, I know it was raining and sometimes chill out there working, my hat's off to them, they did a fantastic job for them, so, I'm just looking at the how they got it out of my head, the hours and things they put in, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, looking at all of that.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Mr. Day.
Mr. Honor. With that, at this time, I'd like to call for the vote, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And proceeding on council on the utilities department, is a resolution in reference to accepting the lowest responsible quote from Riley Heating and Air for the replacement of the utilities department dispatch break room HVAC unit in an amount not to exceed nineteen thousand fifty-one dollars, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Phoenix City, Alabama Utilities Department has an HVAC unit that Whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama Utilities Department has an HVAC unit that is in need of replacement, and whereas the Utilities Department received two of three quotes from the Building Department that they requested from the following companies: Riley Heating and Air, nineteen thousand fifty-one dollars; C and G Heating and Air LLC, nineteen thousand six hundred four dollars; ISI Indoor Solutions, no quote provided. Whereas Riley Heating and Air has provided the lowest quote to perform said work in an amount not to exceed nineteen thousand fifty-one dollars. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby accept the lowest responsible quote from Riley Heating and Air for the replacement of the Utilities Department Dispatch Brake Room HVAC unit with a new unit in an amount not to exceed nineteen thousand fifty-one dollars, passed through and adopted this eighteenth day of January twenty twenty-three.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Lee, so much. Council, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Gordy. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Bailey. Any comments or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Daye.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy.
Yes.
Mayor Loeb.
Yes.
Thank you.
And Council also proceeding, uh, is a resolution in reference to accepting a proposal from Thompson Power Systems for preventative maintenance services for the eighteenth emergency generator sites in an amount not to exceed twenty-three thousand eight hundred and two dollars. Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama is in need of the annual preventative maintenance services for eighteen emergency generator sites, and whereas the city has received a proposal for preventative maintenance services for eighteen emergency generator sites from Thompson Power Systems in a total amount of twenty-three thousand eight hundred two dollars, and whereas the city has budgeted for these aligned items to be purchased in fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, hereby authorizes the mayor and city manager to accept the proposal from Thompson Power Systems for the preventative maintenance services for the eighteen emergency generator sites in an amount not to exceed twenty-three thousand eight hundred two dollars, passed through and adopted this eighteenth day of January twenty twenty-three.
Okay. Council, we have all heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilwoman Carter. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Daye?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions, discussion? Okay. Now, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Daye.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy.
Yes.
Mayor Loeb.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Council on the Ordinance, this is a first reading. It's an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, Chapter seventy-four, Streets, Sidewalks and Other Public Places, Article Three, Underground Utilities Policy, Section seventy-four dash sixty-seven, Street Opening and Pavement Cut Fees, Description and Schedule, B, Application Fee, and C, Inspection Fee. Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, Chapter seventy-four, Streets, Sidewalks and Other Public Places, Article Three, Underground Utilities Policy, Section seventy-four dash sixty-seven, Street Opening and Pavement Cut Fees, Description and Schedule, B, Application Fee, and C, Inspection Fee. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the Code of Ordinances of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, Chapter seventy-four, Streets, Sidewalks and Other Public Places, Article Three, Underground Utilities Policy, Section seventy-four dash sixty-seven, Street Opening and Pavement Cut Fees, Description and Schedule, B, Application Fee, and C, Inspection Fee, are hereby amended as follows. Section seventy-four dash sixty-seven, Permit Fees, B, Application Fee. A non-refundable permit application fee in the amount of thirty dollars shall accompany each application for a street opening and/or pavement cut permit to cover the cost of administration. If the permit is denied, the application fees shall not be refunded to the applicant. If the permit is approved, the applicant shall also pay to the city an inspection fee and a pavement res servicing fee as provided herein. C, Inspection Fee. An inspection fee in the amount of forty-five dollars will be assessed for right-of-way disturbed by the opening, excavation, boring, or cut permit. The inspection fee shall cover the cost of monitoring and inspecting these services, passed through and adopted this eighteenth day of January twenty twenty-three.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Council, we've heard the first reading. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to place on first reading. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to place on first reading.
All right, motion from Councilman Gordy. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Daye. Any comments or discussion?
Let me ask you this. Those folk, uh, in the city right away, what have you, running old caper underground or using the street, but there's a certain time, once they cut that pavement industry, there's a certain time for them to go back and repair that.
We try to make them repair that in a timely manner, but a lot of time they bring in outside contractors to do that, and we have our guidelines to follow, but that's what we're trying to straighten out with a lot of them now.
And then, once they repair it, we have, uh, the engineer to go out and inspect it?
We have to inspect it.
Okay. I just went on San Pablo, it took them so long, I saw, okay.
A lot of times, like I say, over the years, we've got twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, with three years, and there's, there's damage from the pandemic and job shortages.
Yeah.
So a lot of times, the same way we have to do understanding, the same, we want people to understand us and give things to the people out here.
Yeah, makes sense, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daye, Mr. Hahn. Okay, at this time, Council, I'd like to call for the vote, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Daye.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy.
Yes.
Mayor Loeb.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Council, uh, for itemized statement of expense, we have a, under the fire department, we have a Christopher Ross for a total of fifty-eight dollars and fifteen cents, so at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for the approval of that expense. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve it.
Okay, motion from Councilwoman Carter. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Daye. Okay, we have the motion and we have the second. At this time, I'm gonna call for the vote, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Daye.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy.
Yes.
Mayor Loeb.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Council, at this time, we'd like to turn it over to our attorney, Mr. Jimmy Graham. Mr. Grant?
Madam Council, excuse me. Madam Council, we have two claims on the agenda today. The first one, uh, is filed by Jamal R. Floyd, uh, lives at seven oh one Twelfth Avenue, Phoenix City. Uh, he says the date of the incident was August the thirty-first, at the location of his home and that he is claiming damages of windshield damage. Uh, you've got the memorandum from the, um, Public Works Director, and it says that on August the, uh, thirty-first, that we did not have any, uh, Public Works crews out there doing any work. So based on that, uh, my recommendation is to deny, um, Mr. Floyd's claim.
Okay. Council, we all have heard the recommendation from our attorney. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve his recommendation.
Motion to approve.
All right, motion from Councilman Daye. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordy. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Daye.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy.
Yes.
Mayor Loeb.
Yes.
Thank you.
The second claim is filed by Sylvia Thomas, Swahili Thomas, and Austin Williams, and this is where a vehicle had backed into their car. Um, they, um, put in their notice of claim, the location of the incident was at or around two hundred Lea Road, one eighty-three Salem, Alabama. Uh, I just didn't, doesn't go to Salem, Alabama, and, uh, they just simply, I think, filed it with the wrong, um, entity, and, uh, my recommendation is to deny this claim.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Graham. Council, we've heard the recommendation from our attorney. This time, I'd like to ask this Council for a motion to approve his, uh, recommendation.
Motion to approve.
All right, motion, Councilman Gordy. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Carter. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Daye.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy.
Yes.
Mayor Loeb.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lee. Thank you, Council. Thank you, everyone, our partner here and everyone. So at this time, uh, Council, I would like to ask this, any, Council have any comments or anything they, he or she would like to say?
Carter? Just like to make just a couple comments. Uh, good turnout the other night, I talked to Miss Hadaway yesterday. Had a real good turnout the other night in that vision. Lot of things brought up that would have something to do with the city. Lot of things brought up the city has nothing to do with. Uh, but I do appreciate each and every citizen that came out and expressed their opinion and their views, and that is one time when I pulled up to the parking lot that evening, I was totally surprised, and I will have to admit that. I'm used to pulling up to any type of function that the city puts out when we ask people to show up to give us their opinion, and very rarely do they do that, so I am just tickled to death that they did take time to do it and hope that from that time forward, they continue to do the same thing online like she was telling me yesterday with all the questions that were posted up on the wall, plus other things that people think of, and plus the new, when we have the, the additional meetings in the future. Uh, it really was a good turnout, uh, looked like this whole city was covered with people from different areas of the city with different concerns, and, uh, everything is being, you know, it does get looked at, it does get talked about, and it does get mulled over in your head, so, uh, there's no question that shouldn't be asked, there's no question that couldn't be asked, and, uh, but some of the questions, you know, you'll never get an answer from the city 'cause it didn't pertain to us, but the majority of the things that were asked, uh, were, were legitimate concerns that, uh, believe it or not, we do discuss, and we do think about the same things that y'all think about as, as, as the citizens of our city. It's just sometimes there is not an answer to some of the, some of the things that you do request and you do ask. Uh, some things just can't be done, it's just financially impossible or physically impossible, but, uh, I do appreciate you showing up, do appreciate you asking those questions and coming in. Also, as I stated yesterday, just celebrated Dr. Martin Luther King's birthday. I grew up in the era of segregation, came along to integration, so I've seen the world from both sides, I'm almost seventy years old, there's a lot of people in this building. Saw a lot of changes in the United States and in people, and as I stated yesterday, looking back, it was a man who had a whole movement for the right reason, for the right people, to make this nation realize that everybody is equal, everybody is the same. We may look different on the outside, but we are all the same on the inside 'cause we're all created by our Lord God. None of us were created any different than each other. I don't care where you live, what kind of hats you put on, where you call home, what religion you call, you're still a child of God's. Everybody on this earth was created by God. Dr. King tried to show us how to overcome hate with love. Have a lot of hatred in this world today, from country to country, person to person. We look different, we act different, we talk different, we live in different places, but we all think that something about us makes us special. None of us are specially nice to God, we're all equal. He loves each one of us equally, sent His own Son to the cross equally for each one of us. Would've sent Him just for one of us, but He sent us for all of us. Let's learn to trust people because of who we are, not because of where we live, not because of what we look like, not because of what you have or don't have. We need to look back to the sixties and realize that we still struggling today, it's not the same causes, but we're still struggling over issues. None of us have the right answer, none of us have the right way of living, and none of us will ever be the person we should be, but we do need to pray to our Lord and Savior and our Creator, that He will give us the strength and the wisdom and the courage to look at ourselves first, and then look at those around us and do as the mayor says. Lift them up, pat them on the back, try to help them, and learn to absolutely love each other and trust each other, and get away from all this hatred and violence. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Uh, ma'am, I wasn't gonna say anything, but Mr. Council Bailey brought a lot of, uh, brought a lot of good points, and I, I'd like to concur to the statement that he made already, I would not be redundant, um, but that is so true, the statement he made, um, as Martin Luther King was all about love, and I, I often say wherever I go, given opportunity to speak to anybody, even church group or whatever, it's all about love. I often say this, well, love purvey a hatred, envy is gone, there's no place for that. And one thing we gotta do, we gotta first show ourselves, uh, friendly and loving kind of folks, we attract those type of individuals, and we first, I, I, I've experienced this since I've been on the council, I've gone, uh, through many trains, so you guys have too, and I've to start talking to folks that I've never known, but they rode for the same train, and how you doing, what's, what y'all doing this, and y'all said how y'all doing this. We became friends, exchanged card, sometimes you have to break the ice, and I like to say I love people, so I love talking to folks, 'cause I, I learn from folks, and that's what we gotta do, and, uh, if we could take the motto that Martin Luther King set for us, either for Jesus Christ, the same method, it's all about love, it's all about love. Believe it or not, as he stated already, we might be, uh, skin color different and what have you, but if you bleed, you gonna bleed red blood, all our blood is red, and it's been said by Mr. Bailey, uh, Jesus died for all of us. He didn't die for no single individual or no certain individual, uh, he died for the whole world, he knew no sin, you know? He set the example for all of us to follow, and we follow the, the example that Jesus Christ set for us, we'll be a better person, often they will be a better person. I often say this in my prayer, I ask the Lord to help me be a better person, a better father, better grandfather. I often say that, and give me the strength, I ask in the God in my heart to treat everybody right, I didn't say no, everybody, that's my prayer, I say that when I pray in church or either in my house there, that's what I say, because flesh, the flesh is weak, I don't care who you are, the flesh is weak, and you know, the devil's, uh, workshop in our mind, you know? The scripture tells us, we all worship, pray, and not think, because our mind just a devil workshop. I didn't mean to say all that, ma'am, I'm sorry. I'm finished.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, can I add one thing, say one thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, and, uh, this is really, uh, a point of privilege and, uh, is personal, but I was just sitting here thinking, and, uh, and I too concur with my fellow council members have said, um, but my brother Gregory Carter will be fifty-three on tomorrow, and I just wanna say happy birthday to Greg, but if you ask him, he'll still say forty-nine, so it was probably some significant that happened to him at forty-nine that he don't wanna get, be in the fifty and above club, but, um, but Greg is turning fifty-three on tomorrow, and I just, once again, wanna say happy birthday. Uh, he has been, um, uh, wheelchair-bound, uh, since COVID now, uh, and, and those of you that don't know, Greg, uh, is a special need, uh, in, uh, citizen and has been, uh, the life of, uh, our family for that many years, and, um, but when Greg was mobile, uh, on feet, he would, um, often sometime act out, and, and, and he, he always know to call nine-one-one if he couldn't get his way. And so officers will often show up at the house, and they, they, uh, gotten to know him by name, well, Greg, what's going on? But Greg always gonna blame it on somebody else, well, you know, Vicki didn't give me what I needed, or Vicki, you know, or Michelle, or whomever it may have been at the time. But Greg was smart enough to know that if he get in that car, he going to jail, so, you know, so the officer will often tease him, well, Greg, you won't get in the car? He's, uh-uh, ain't getting in y'all car. So, but again, it's just funny, I was just here reminiscing, uh, how far we have come, uh, in, in, you know, taking Greg, uh, taking care of Greg since our mother passed, and she passed in two thousand and six, so that been about seventeen years since we've been taking care of Greg, but, um, but once again, thank you, ma'am, for the point of privilege and saying happy birthday to Greg, he's doing well, uh, he probably is not watching if it's not on Family Feud or, um, uh, the six o'clock, uh, six-thirty news with David Mir, but he's still saying Peter Jennings. He know that, he know it, all the, the river mother, the, uh, uh, Family Feud and, uh, World News, but he, he'll still say with Peter Jennings, and Peter Jennings hasn't been doing World News in, in a while, but Greg is, uh, he is the light of our life, so happy birthday, Greg.
Thank you. Mr. Gordy? Mr. Hahn? Before we close?
Well, ma'am, I go, but it's real fast, um, as we was talking about earlier, our Utilities Department, um, we don't talk about it enough, we talk about a lot of the rough times, but, you know, we received an upgrade in our Utility Department and from standards and pores, you know, and that's people, the greatest, great cities and counties throughout the nation, and, um, and that was because of the way we handle a lot of our funding and our projects, so that's something in this day and time, or something that's many people don't receive, and I wanted to make sure our citizens understood that and make sure that gets put in our local newspaper also. The other thing in newspaper, um, local newspaper last week was about two projects and dealing with the county. First thing I wanna say, I hope you all seen this morning, when we dealing with military, Alabama is number two state for military families.
Yep.
And especially retirees to live in, and, you know, in our area, we have a lot of military families that live here, you know, and, um, all families are important throughout, no matter who they are that lives here, but, um, we have Fort Mitchell, and we talked about projects, I want, and some of the people you said was at the meeting the other day and talk about the growth in Ladona, I want people to understand something. Walmart and the Gerard Partnership, they are located in Phoenix City, that was worked and recruited through our Economic Development Department. That was worked and recruited through our Economic Development Department. We have helped that area grow. That's the same thing that we are trying to do for a lot of the military families that are located in Fort Mitchell. It's just so happened, we have more infrastructure set up in the Ladona area for these, um, large, um, for Walmart to come in and for Gerard Partnership. That's men's and women's, it, um, it's helped with this community a lot, and he's getting to be very involved and helping. A lot of people need to understand something, when we have people here that's partnering with the city to help develop our city, a couple of things were said overnight, you know, you look at the River Center, you know, we want that in Phoenix City, but that was given through private donations. We know the Trade Center from the Bradley family. That was given through the Bradley family, Turners, and all of them that work together. We need more people in the city instead of complaining about the city to participate in enhancing the city. This thing gonna get through this rep like fast. The problem with the project in Fort Mitchell, and this is work through the Department of Defense, they are allocating throughout the nation with communities that are adjacent to military installations. And this past couple of years, this past one and twenty-two, was ninety million dollars allocated. With the grant process that we was trying to work with the county on, they had the opportunity to, to secure up to twenty million dollars to help with infrastructure with a lot of, which will help with a lot of the family and the recruitment of industry and anything else in Fort Mitchell. Nothing where we was planning on doing any annexation or anything else down that way, just to help those communities, because all those people and a lot of the family shop in Phoenix City. They help us a lot economically. So we should have a partnership in trying to help them. The things that we were trying to do when we worked the projects, we told them from the beginning who we was working with in the meetings with Mr. Victor Cross, who's diligently trying to help and working with our Economic and Planning Department. And those things were laid out on the table, how they supposed to work to help those. And it's timeline on that, to try to secure that, to help those families and the growth in that area too. Phoenix City sits in Russell County. We want to help the entire county if we're helping, but we've already done so much in the Ladona area. It's time to help in Fort Mitchell. And a lot of people need to know this and how it work, and they need to get involved in helping a lot of the families that's down there, because you have a tremendous amount of residents down there, structures. You have a lot of people that's retired that's down there. It would boom if they had the infrastructure, it would take off.
Well, we can't do the infrastructure ourselves, because we're too far from Fort Mitchell to qualify. So they can qualify, if they, if, you know, if they continue the process, which will help them, and then we can still be involved with the tree and the sewage and, and the water and everything. And then Russell County is not going to lose anything at all. They'll gain because the citizens that shop in the city will shop there now, and those citizens are still going to shop both places.
That's correct.
They're going to come to town and get certain things and get certain things down there, but our whole county can start growing two different directions from this river.
And you were here, well, if we did this, for one thing, federal government, if we got the grant, would be putting out the money to pay that. The money that they were going to upfront to try to do some of the engineering and some of the, get, looking at the construction phase, putting that together, so you would be ready. So you would be ready to take on this. They got to understand this, it's not like we asking Russell County to give us anything. We have ongoing projects of fifteen million dollars right now that the city is paying for with our wastewater, everything else, to be prepared for anything we have to do.
Or increase, yeah.
We already treat sewage, Fort Mitchell station, we already treat and sell water to Russell County. And doing that, so we're trying to help the whole area, but it's unfair to say we're going to do even more over here where we've done so much at already and nothing over here. That's not right. I just want to get that out to the public so that they can hear this, so it's no fighting, we don't have time to fight, whatever, it's just a matter of being fair.
Well, they're the only ones that can do that, because they're the only ones located that close to Fort Mitchell, which is one of the priorities to get those grants.
And I have made sure we have loaned our personnel from planning to work to help them with anything that they're doing, and they've been working on that. But if you're not gonna go all the way with it and do what you're supposed to do, then we're going to put our attention somewhere else, and that's what we've had to do.
Well, Mr. Hunt, as I, uh, listen to you elaborate on the infrastructure that going out to Ladona, a lot of folk not aware that the city infrastructure go over down to Winn-Dixie on that side over there. A lot of folk not aware of that. And you, like you said, we have done quite a bit going out Highway eighty, Ladona area, and I agree with you what you're saying.
We've made sure they had all those developments out there, the same thing we want to try to help them do in Fort Mitchell, where you have hundreds and hundreds of them.
Yeah.
And you have people with septic tanks that got a failure and, and everything else. So you've got to start somewhere else, you know? You've got to have a starting point. And they've been working on this, and it's failed several times before. And I want people to understand, this is not, the commission in that area, Ms. Epps, this is not her fault.
No, no.
It's the same thing it said, if people won't help you and you don't have the votes to get things done, whether you're on this council or commission, you can't progress. So a lot of people will falsely accuse people of not being able to get things done, well, you have to have other people that's willing to work with you, you know? And when you have conflicts of interest that are in place with people that should be helping throughout the whole county, that's a problem, and I don't mind speaking on it. You know, you got to have courage. People got to understand, you need to have courage if you're going to help try to set things right, just like you was speaking on earlier, um, and as well spoken by you, Mr. Day, and, and by, um, you, Mr. Bailey, about what we have to do as people. But we're, if, if I'm just going to say it the way, only way I know to say it, if people are not going to be fair and play tricks, they don't have to worry about me being involved in it. That's, we're, we're going to do what we're supposed to do to help everybody.
And, and that's a great segue. One of the things that this council has always talked about in, in hanging its hats on is being consistent and doing what's right. Uh, everything has to start with character and integrity. That will not, never, ever change. And we want to encourage people to participate, to get involved with their community, but also keep us accountable. And I am so grateful and thankful to the good Lord that I've worked with this council that we do things the right way consistently, and that's the key. And I do just want to mention just, uh, what Councilman Daley and Councilman Day said, um, we, we all know what's right. We know right from wrong. If I do an analogy, and if I drew a crooked line on a wall, you would be able to identify that crooked line very easily, to know how a straight one look. Well, to know how a straight line look, you have to know how a crooked one look first. So the point is, we know right from wrong. And the courage is to do right, in spite of, uh, how we may get attacked it, or you may get attacked it. There are times to always step up and take the high road. Now, I do want to caveat that, that there are times you have to get on the table, but it should be for the sake of the whole, for the community, for people. So we are living in some tough times, but it's a great opportunity for all of us to,